Two submitted articles. Vote, I don't know if we're going to be able to vote. We were joined by Mr. O'Leary in executive session, but he wasn't anticipating being, even being here this evening. So I think we should reserve a vote until he's back and the five of us can, can take care of that together.
For what?
Madam Chair, that's up to you. So the advantage to taking any votes that we might be comfortable taking this evening is that they can be printed in the version of a warrant that can be mailed to each residence.
Right.
And we can provide that version to the printer tomorrow. I did lock up the draft of the motions that included recommendations for votes.
Yes.
We do not have dollar amounts for any of the articles at this point in time, so there really isn't much to discuss, but the principle of many of the articles is something that is historically recommended.
Pretty routine.
So I encourage you to consider voting to recommend where you're comfortable with.
Okay. Well, Article One is pretty routine, so.
Correct.
Shall we, shall we, do you, do you want to talk about the meeting schedule first, or do you want to talk about the articles?
The town meeting?
Yes.
I will just state that the town meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, October 3rd at 7:00 p.m. at Muffrey Middle High School. It will be held in the, in the gymnasium, as has been the case. We're confirming that with the public schools. We have 14 articles on the warrant here. There was a version of this that was in the packet. It was pending review with the town council. There have been no changes that have been made to it, so it's the same version that we saw earlier. And I can go article by article, and as I present, if you want to have a vote, you can do that.
Let me just ask you a quick question in terms of this. We're reviewing it right now, but this isn't our informal public hearing before the public hearing. We're still going to do that so that people can comment, can come and comment on individual articles.
That's correct. The hearing will be at the next meeting on September 28th.
Right. And people can join by Zoom like they have been doing. So I think we're getting a lot of people joining us for those, for those kind of informal meeting before the meeting. So, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Gilberto.
Do you, Madam Chair, if you're okay, would it, would we go right to the motions for the recommendations earlier?
Sure. But just for people that are here, Article One is a pretty standard article that when people from the different departments want to give a report, usually Mrs. Hurlby gives a report, right, from the finance committee?
I didn't do that in the chair in October.
Well, you'd, you'd be able to if you had something to report in October. So we just let the, let them give their report. It's pretty routine. We generally never say no to this one. So do we have a motion on that one?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to recommend here and act on reports of town officers and committees.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we, we're going to vote to recommend Article One. Prior year bills is a pretty standard. We typically wait until recommend at town meeting, and that, that way we know what the specific bills are. It's a requirement to, to vote those this way because we've already closed out the prior year. So we need a special vote of the town meeting to be able to pay those. So it would be motion to recommend at, at town meeting. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, prior year bills.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Article Three.
Article Three, recommend we deal appropriate money to the town's general stabilization fund while we are awaiting certification of available free cash. My recommendation is that we make a recommendation at town meeting.
All right. And stabilization fund is what we all, also known as our rainy day fund. So do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting to appropriate money to the stabilization fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Mr. Gilberto, we typically do give money once a year to the stabilization fund, correct?
Please try to, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. When is the last time, do you know, that we put money?
We need a transfer in June.
June, okay. All right.
It feels like a while ago.
Yeah. Or just yesterday. All right. Article Four.
Madam Chair, three, capital improvement stabilization fund. This is the fund that we use to either offset debt service or make some capital purchases directly from, I'm anticipating that there will be a transfer in in accordance with our financing plan, so I am asking for it to consider if you vote to recommend the article. This we do through general hearing.
Do you have a set amount yet?
I don't have it off the top of my head. Typically around $300,000. It'll even increase as in this fiscal year, but we'll, we'll have an actual recommendation once the cash is certified.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I have moved to recommend, recommend, excuse me, I have moved to recommend appropriate money to the capital improvement stabilization fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Article Five, this is an article that allows for a housekeeping transfer of any funds that were not transferred out from the prior year's appropriation. It's our stabilization fund for solid base, which we use to try to stabilize the rate. We do not have a rejection for a transfer at this point in time, but I do suggest that we leave it on the warrant and recommend at town meeting a transfer event.
Oh, recommend a town meeting. Okay, that's certain that you had here.
Oops, sorry about that, Mr. Wallner.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Five, appropriate money to the solid base stabilization.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, Article Six is a transfer of funds as part of our participating funding arrangement. We transfer the balance of health insurance through the performance of the PFA from the prior fiscal year in the October after the end of the year into the stabilization fund. And so my recommendation is to vote to recommend this article. We do not typically have that dollar amount to the end of the town.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article Six, appropriate money to the participating fund arrangement fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gilberto, are we going to have the usual presentation by our fund manager on the, how, what we're doing with the insurance?
What I, what we typically receive in the fall is a statement as to what the surplus was of the prior year, so I expect we'll have that for the town meeting. I'll present that to the select board as soon as it's available. And the proposal would be to take the town share of that dollar amount to 70% and transfer it. Article Seven, the operating budget. We don't have any specifics yet, but it's likely we will have some transfers to be considered at the articles, under Article Seven at the October town meeting. But at this time, my recommendation is to vote to recommend a town meeting.
Do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Seven, amend fiscal year 2023 operating budget.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Article Eight, we allow for the rescission of any prior authorizations to borrow. We typically do this in tandem with our capital budget, already changes to that capital budget, but at this time, my recommendation is to, we'll vote to recommend at town meeting action of this because we don't know whether there will be any specific decisions or not.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Five, excuse me, Article Eight, recent authorization to borrow.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Article Nine, a potential amendment to the FY '23 capital budget. I do expect that there will be recommendations for amendments to the capital budget approved at the June town meeting, potentially relative to projects approved at prior town meetings. We await a record of the capital improvement planning committee, which I expect to have the evening of the hearing, September 28th. But at this time, I would ask the board to vote to recommend a town meeting.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Nine, amend 2023 capital budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Article Ten, appropriating money for secondary school building litigation. We continue to monitor the performance of the appropriation, prior appropriation relative to this. My recommendation is that we vote to recommend a town meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Ten, appropriate money for legal expenses, secondary school building litigation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Similarly for Article Eleven, for ongoing litigation relative to 20 Elm Street, we hope 40d had that location. My recommendation is to vote to recommend.
Recommend. Okay, that's certain that was here. Madam Chair, I move to recommend a town meeting, Article Eleven, appropriate money for legal expenses, 20 Elm Street litigation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, three, Article Twelve, appropriating money for the facilities master plan. This is made as a recommendation of the facilities master plan committee, requesting funding for the completion of the master plan that was begun, was funded in October 2017, but begun in the past roughly a year ago. Madam Chair, three, if you're able to, Miss Hurlby, if you can remind me of the dollar amount.
Did you have any dollar amount, Mrs. Hurlby?
Yeah, $20,000 funding source free cash.
So, so our motion would be to?
Recommend.
Recommend. And in the sum, we would be able to, that is a specific sum.
You said $20,000?
$20,000?
Yeah.
So I'll just add that in?
You just said recommend, yes.
I mean, do I add the $20,000 to the motion?
No.
No, no, okay. So Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article Twelve, appropriate money for facilities master plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mrs. Hurlby.
Madam Chair, three, Article Thirteen, appropriating funding for fire station schematic design. This is a project that was presented to the board at the August 8 regular meeting here in this room, and the facilities master plan committee is recommending a vote to request $300,000 for schematic design for the fire station. We believe the funding source will be free cash, although as we go through that process for certification, we'll determine, and for certain, have a recommendation on the 28th meeting.
Okay.
And the facilities master plan voted to approve?
Yes. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'm noticing that two of the articles are tagged as sponsored by the select board, but they're actually submitted by the facilities master planning committee. So we can, we can address that when we get to the signature moment, but it should actually look like that, I think.
Sure. Okay. So that, we're on to Article Thirteen. It does say sponsored by the select board, and the, the, the facilities master planning committee's been up and running now since COVID passed and gotten this to be put on as a top priority, the highest priority on the list of many, many priorities. But this is the top priority to get that fire station up to, up to par. I don't want to say up to code, because it is in code, but it needs, it needs, it's, it's in much, much in need of improvement. The, the Article Thirteen, do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article Thirteen, appropriate money for fire station schematic design.
All right. No, we don't usually do that.
Second.
But we, we do want to know what, what it is that we're saying yes to.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, three, Article Fourteen, appropriation of funding for surveying wetland delineation on town owned land located within affordable housing zoning overlay district at 57 April Street, 44 to 46 Oakdale Road, and 7 St. Teresa Street. This was an article that the board had brought up and subsequently brought to the planning commission, I believe Mrs. Gonzalez, over the planning commission. I don't want to comment on their position regarding that.
Yeah, so I attended the planning commission meeting and told them our wishes to have them come on board with this article with us, and they were happy to do it.
Right. And this, this goes back to a few town meetings ago when we were trying to vote on the three affordable housing parcels that have been, I guess, designated, at least one of which was in wetlands, or a lot of people from the town were explaining, you know, how, how can you possibly develop there, and you're not even sure what the, what the land, you know, topography is. And though they were neighbors and they were familiar with it. So there were three specific parcels at that time that we basically passed over to get more information. And one of the things that we thought is if it's our land and we're divesting of our land, that we should really know what portions of it are buildable, what portions of it are wetlands, beyond just what we have on our, our GIS or our maps, and really have an actual survey so that the town knows when it takes a vote on, on these articles, specifically what, what we're divesting and where building can take place on these, on these lots. So that was the, really just the kind of purpose of putting it back on here is to get the money designated, to get these surveys done on these three particular parcels.
And just to add, at, at that time, it looked like we were not in, we were not in unison. But it wasn't for the reasons that people thought. We are on board for affordable housing. We just wanted to know what we have there. And it's why we went against it at the time. So now we're going to go in unison with this.
And I think in the, in the, in the parcel on Havre Hill Street, there were quite a few residents that were voting members at the meeting that raised concerns about the safety, safety aspect of that very busy street and putting another development right there, what type of development?
Right.
Would be being put there for affordable housing. So they were pretty concerned about that. So I think that was compelling in terms of what we heard from people there as well. So now we're going to just do this hand in hand with the, with the CPC. So.
Can I ask a question? Is it going to be, I mean, is this, is this wide enough to cover everything? It's more than just wetlands, right, the way you're describing it? I'm not sure. Is that right, when I say that?
My understanding was that the article was to address wetland delineation possibly surveyed associated with it.
So that would take care of what Mr. O'Leary was asking about?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't know what he was asking about, so.
All right. Okay. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article Fourteen, appropriate money for wetland delineation or town owned land located within affordable housing zone overlay district 57 Havre Hill Street, 44 to 46 Oakdale Road, and 7 St. Teresa Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I believe we have a vote for signing the warrant.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to sign the October 3rd, 2022 town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez.
Do we have corrections to you?
We took, we took Article Twelve and Thirteen to change sponsor of select board to facilities master plan.
With that amendment and the motion?
With that amendment. Thank you. Is that already in here? Did you already?
It's not. I need to reprint it. You can sign it because I'll substitute the pages.
You know, we have it signed the way it is?
You can sign it.
Okay.
Mr. Gilberto, Twelve and Thirteen?
Correct.
Was the amended motion?
Yes.
With the modification of the sponsor being the facilities master planning committee?
That's correct.
So, so moved? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? It seems like it's a lean warrant. Where's the rest of the articles? It's missing half of the articles. Should we, should we try to put some more on here while we're here?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. So that is, so Mr. Oh, okay, Jen's going to grab that for us to sign.
Yeah.
You can sign this copy and we'll substitute the pages to have that changed.
Okay. All right. So our next order of business, Martin's Landing, local.
Madam Chair, three, I'm sorry, but I see that we've lost those one connection here. I thought it was.
Give it a minute?
Yeah. Okay. To think I haven't corrected, I owe half a year. Lost the year.
All right. We have the next order of business on the agenda, which is a local initiative program application for local action units. And Mr. Gilberto, why don't you take that away? It looks pertaining to Martin's Landing.
It is, Madam Chair.
Pulte Homes application.
Correct. And as this board knows, we provide a feedback to the zoning board of appeals that we would like to see affordable units as part of their additional development on that site that goes back, I think, almost two years at this point in time. The zoning board of appeals included a condition upon granting the ability to construct 52 additional units on the, on the floor of their buildings that were at the time supposed to be constructed. In addition, eight, eight units were to be designated affordable under the state's requirements for the subsidized housing inventory. In order for that to happen, we need to sponsor them becoming added to the inventory. And so this is an agreement that we would be entering into, that would get these units put onto the affordable housing inventory once constructed. They would have a perpetual affordability restriction that would only be eliminated should a seller not be able to find a buyer, that's standard language. So this is fulfilling what we saw from the board of appeals a year and a half ago, which was additional units by making, be designated essential.
I may be doing the math wrong, but we were really specific about the percentage of units coming on board being 15% affordable housing. So if I'm doing my math right, eight is not 15% of that number.
I'd have to go back to where the discussion landed, but I know that the special permit that was granted called for eight units to be afforded.
So we were all, I believe, except for Vincenzo on the board at that time, and we, we really were specific because Pulte came to us as well to do the presentation on this.
When they were adding a floor.
That's correct.
I was here for that.
You were?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
So how many units in total are they getting?
No, it was eight.
There comes a seven point.
It was eight. Okay, it was eight.
It was 15, we were looking for 15% of the total number.
What was the total number?
Of 52. Of 52.
Oh, so I'm, okay, so, okay. It says 502, though.
That's the grand total, yes.
Right.
Of all five floors?
Of all nine buildings.
Okay.
This is only relative to four of them.
Right. Good. Okay. All right. So it's, I read it wrong then. So we're talking about the added floor, 15% of those units.
Correct.
So the total number of 15% would be at least eight of those units.
Eight out of 52 units.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
Good. I read that wrong, because I thought it said 502 in the agreement. So I was so, my glasses. And I'm not good at math, but I can do that math.
In fact, you need to add another floor because it's a million units.
All right. Mr. Is there anything else to let the board know with regard to the application? It has to be signed? Is there a deadline or anything like that going forward with this? Because it looks like they're going to DHCDU with regard to, I guess, identifying that number?
That's correct.
On our behalf as affordable?
And I, I don't love the presentation of the very marked up application, but that is a requirement that was put forward by DHCD, so that's why you see a marked up version. But I would encourage the board to sign. And this is what, this is, I know we had hoped for a higher number, but in the end, what we ended at was the eight units. And that's what was granted in the special permit. This step will take us, this would be another step in the direction of getting those on the inventory.
Right. And you just reminded me, it was, it was for the floor of units. We did get 15%.
Of the new units on the additional floors.
Right. Right. Okay.
Four floors, one on each floor.
Yes, yes. That's right. Yes. Okay. So do we, is there any, do we have any questions about that?
Just the markup? Who did the markup?
It's town council, actually.
Town council. Okay.
So we feel good about that, because there was a lot to go through there. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Total number of 502, eight will be, okay. Oh, that's a whole thing. All right. Okay. Do we have any motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Martin's Landing revised local action units application.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. They have to change the spelling of my name, because that's wrong too. Unless that's an edit they wanted to see as well. Do you want this back?
Uh, sure.
Madam Chair, is the warrant going around because the big constable's here this evening?
I have it right here.
Yes.
Sign the wrong name to it.
Two copies.
Yes, the other copy. All right. Are we okay to move on? Next order of business is the show cause hearing. Smokes and snacks, vote to amend?
So I think our hope is that this is not a relevant vote, and that by the time the hearing date actually comes, the ABCC will have signed off on the transfer that was approved by the board on August 8. But in the event that is not the case, we had set the hearing the evening of July 11th, prior to setting the meeting schedule. So we set the hearing for Monday, September 26th, but then subsequently changed the date of the meeting from the 26th to the 28th. So I'm recommending, just to keep everything in order on this issue, that we vote to amend the continued hearing date from September 26th to September 28th. And I notified the license, a licensee at the time in July that that was initiated, as we need to be aware, so they are well aware. But again, I think our hope is that within the next two weeks, we hear from the ABCC that they have signed off on the transfer, and the disciplinary hearing becomes a moot vote.
Great. So do we have a motion to amend?
Madam Chair, I move to amend the continued show cause hearing for smokes and snacks incorporated due in Business As Brought 28, lucky mark, from Monday, September 26th to Wednesday, September 28th.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next order of business is to select the date for the wastewater workshop, because we, we had to reschedule that. For some unknown reason, we were picking a Friday evening, which is really just torturing ourselves here.
It was the only one available.
With all the meetings we already go to. All right.
Do you know, did Steve O'Vere give us some of his times of availability?
I don't believe so.
Should we hold off then and just, I mean, because you, you are allowed to circulate an email to schedule on that for us without being...
Can we, can we just try to, amongst the four of us, pick two dates?
Oh, sure.
And then, we can suggest that this week?
Sure, Mr. Wallner, that's a good idea. What do you, what do you...
How about daytime? Is it day, night?
It can really be at any point in time, but I can tell you that, I'm sure the professionals that would love, love a daytime meeting, but we understand that it needs to be in the evening.
We wake up at 4:00 AM in my house, so...
Not in mine. Then they're done that.
We're gonna try it daytime.
So, the DBW director put out there, Wednesday, September 14th. That has a starting point for discussion, so I'm gonna put that out there.
What time?
I won't, I'm not available.
Yeah, Wednesday is a bad one.
I'm also not available.
This was a reminder that Wednesday's a bad one.
We have a meeting on the 28th, if you're available for that, though, right?
We do have a meeting scheduled.
Yeah, we do have another Wednesday.
Right, we put a Wednesday night again, because we're, I don't remember why we didn't have the 26th, but...
It's a holiday.
About Tuesday, the 20th?
Not, not available the next couple of weeks.
Oh, when are you available? I guess we should set it there.
I think we might be going into October.
I don't think we can do that.
I think we want to be mindful of a certain time of day.
Town meeting is on the 3rd, so we already have a meeting scheduled that.
Last week of September.
That's too late.
Rasha Shana is Monday.
Madam Chair, when are you back? There's a lot of motion going on.
About Tuesday, the 27th.
That's good.
Tuesday, the 27th?
Even though we have the 28th?
Only if you guys want to meet at about 8:30 or 9:00, so...
At night?
At night.
That's what we do.
That's true, yeah. And we have a meeting on the 28th already, so...
What, Friday, the 23rd?
I think we were asking for three hours.
Three hours?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Friday, the 23rd, is that your office day still?
Three hours.
There's a lot to go through.
Are you still doing an office day on Fridays?
So, Friday, no, Friday, the 23rd?
Yeah.
In the afternoon, if you, if you can do...
I'll be out of town.
Hands on here.
Sorry.
Can we do...
I would hate to do it on...
Can we do a Saturday? Is that like the 7th of, would that be possible? Can you try?
I'll be out of town, the 17th to the 24th, I'm up.
I would be out on the first.
Do you want, I know this may not be the most efficient, but you want to split it? Do two?
No.
No?
No.
I'm just trying to see.
Realistically speaking, we, we can't get through a meeting in, there's no way we're gonna get through a three-hour meeting in two, two meetings of one and a half hours.
No, 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 that's not what I meant. I meant that if certain board members can make one day, the person, like, we just, yeah, it's the same thing.
Why are we, so, I'm not following, why are we not, what, what's the issue? What are we trying to, why are we trying to cram it in right now?
I think we're trying to leave ample opportunity for public outreach over the course of October, November.
Yeah.
Before the November...
So, this one has to be done first.
So, but why can't we pick a day in October, and then the public out, there could be multiple public outreach meetings? And if we're meeting anyway, the public can be sitting in on that meeting as well.
We certainly can, it just will compress the outreach.
Yeah.
And I think that a number of us are hesitant to go to any other venue and present this without having come here first.
I think we're gonna need feedback, but some things might change.
Yeah.
That's reality.
So, what about next week? What's next week look like for everybody?
No, I, I'm not available. I actually, the days you are picking, I have pre-trials and trials, and I'm not gonna schedule anything around those, I'm sorry. We already plugged in a bunch of meetings during those.
So, we're down to the last week of September.
Let me ask this, on that Wednesday, the 28th?
We have a meeting, yeah.
I know, but can you, do you think you can...
You don't have to meet with me, you can meet without me, and I'll catch up. I catch up pretty quickly.
I can catch you up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I will read through the materials, too, so...
So, if that's the case, Rich, do you have a day next week?
Day next week? I'm hesitant to not have her there, but...
Hesitant to what?
Not have her there. I think, I think we collectively do better, meeting all together, on something like this. I think it's gonna be involved, I mean, I haven't seen it, you know better than I do, but I think it's involved.
So, what about the last week of September?
We want to be, let's put it this way.
Did you have anything there, Kate?
Let's put it this way, I think we should be on the same page by the time that the meeting is done.
How about the, what about the first week of October? Does everybody have the 7th in the afternoon available?
When did you say?
October 7th.
That's Friday.
I'm gonna say weekend, yeah, I'm gone that, I'm gone that weekend.
I mean, we're not even sure if Steve's gonna be there either, so, so that...
What about the 30th, Friday?
We'll leave the DBW director's not available, 29th to 30th, it's the only two days he gave me, he couldn't do it. Sorry.
Can we do it on a Sunday?
Oh, good God almighty.
After term, after term.
I think Sunday...
Sunday, I believe Sunday meetings are discouraged by the Attorney General, not that it's not possible. Thinking if you're gonna do a weekend day, it would be a Saturday, not that I recommend that either.
Sunday, Sunday meetings are highly discouraged by my husband, too, so...
17th to 24th? We're going on the 17th to 24th?
I think we're going to be in October.
I'm going the 17th to the 24th.
17th to the 24th, so we're on a 7th.
Wednesday, October 5th.
Yom Kippur.
Evening?
Oh, it is, I see in my calendar.
Evening, evening meeting? In the evening?
I'm suggesting we leave it to holiday.
What, what day?
October 5th is a holiday?
Yom Kippur.
Oh, okay.
What about the 4th?
Yom Kippur begins at Sunday, so I forget it before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The, the 3rd, we have town meeting, so... So, the 7th is out, the 6th?
So, could, let's, let's think about that, could we do town meeting from 4:30 to 7:30? Because it never usually gets started until 7:30, could we do it there? And I would anticipate that town meeting's gonna be pretty short, if there's nothing really highly controversial in that, so...
No, because this thing we say, this thing could drag.
Well, I mean, we'd have to limit it to three hours, so... Three hours is a long time for anybody's attention span anyways.
I don't know that we should pack this into before the town meeting, because we do typically do have a meeting before the town meeting already.
I think we're back to Friday, the 7th.
I know, but I think the 7th is out, though, somebody cannot make it on the 7th.
Is it the 6th? Not a possibility, Thursday, the 6th?
And you wonder why our meetings go so long?
Yeah, I could do...
We can't even pick a day.
Yeah, I could do the 6th at night.
I can.
Neither can Lee, and that's a bad...
Can you do early morning? Can anybody do the, the 6th, early morning?
The 6th?
Daytime, I can make any day work. I just need advance notice.
I mean, I don't, I don't even mind being here at 6:00 in the morning.
You don't mind being here at 6:00 in the morning?
I get up early in the morning.
But again, don't, if, if, the sticking point is me not being there, you can, you can meet without me, and I will get caught up quickly.
Yeah. Why don't we just do that, and then we can get the presentation over to Kate? Like, you know, like, yeah.
What, what are we saying?
So, I think we're back to September.
If we go, so, the week of the 12th, because I'd rather get in sooner rather than later if we can, and is there any daytime availability you have to land?
I have flexibility, some flexibility in the day.
Or afternoon?
I could probably do a Tuesday morning or a Friday morning.
So, Friday, the 16th, I have wide open, what about you, Rich?
I have, I can move it around.
And I know that...
I can change that.
We've had calls where I know Steve has been able to do Friday mornings.
Yes, we have a financial planning team meeting now.
What time? Can we move it?
No.
Why not?
I'm not sure we're gonna do it on another day.
What time is the meeting supposed to be? 8:30?
Actually, we have two dates, the 16th and the 23rd.
Great, we'll do the 23rd.
23rd.
No, no, 20, no, no, that's for financial planning, that we can move it to the 23rd.
We did hold two out, yeah.
See?
Yeah.
So, you want to do the 16th? I would feel a lot better if, because, well, Steve and I are both, but like, at least if like, if all we have to do after the 16th is like, we find a couple of hours, like, you know, to give her all the information, and then like, again, she can email directly, whoever, at least, you know, we have that out there. Because I do think that there's so, yeah, there's just so much information...
Yeah.
That I, I just think that...
How much time are we allotted?
Three hours.
So...
Tabby, you starting the meeting?
On the 16th, you want...
I need to be in Lexington.
At what time?
1:00.
1:00? We could do 8 o'clock.
Yeah, 8 o'clock, I mean, we do 7, 8 o'clock.
We can do 4, I don't sleep.
I, I can do 8 o'clock, it can't be before 8.
Okay, I can do that.
Are you bringing lunch?
Huh? All right, so 8 to 11 on the 16th, that's a suggestion?
All right, what, September 16th?
If your case settles, you can destroy us. It's not gonna happen.
September 16th, I can...
Yeah, and assuming Rich can, I mean, Steve can do it.
Yeah. Do you want me to text him?
Yeah, or, I mean, it doesn't matter, you have to bother him now, I don't know what he's doing, but...
Yeah, should I?
I'm just setting it there, and then, yeah.
And then, it really should, you, we really should lock in some of these other days that you want to do the public outreach. I mean, the public can sit in on that meeting as well, but if the, if there, are these public meetings, are they intended to be with us, or just public service meetings with the members of the public?
I think we'd like to have board members there. I think, Madam Chair, now that we have this date, we can, we can address a schedule at this meeting. Now, we'll have a draft for it, based on this date.
Okay, so, so we're not gonna pick the public, the public, the public meetings yet? But they'll be sometime in October?
I, I expect in October and November, multiple instances of interaction, not just in the venue of a select board meeting, but in other places as well.
Right, the library, or wherever you can have a lot of people, distance learning lab, or whenever you can have, wherever you can have a lot of people to know about that. Okay, so, is that it for that?
Yes.
That took us a half an hour, all right.
If he responds, I'll let you know.
Memorandum of agreement with North Reading Superior Offices Association, do we have a motion?
I think we're...
Now, we're doing it in public now.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, I move to ratify and sign the memorandum of agreement between the town in North Reading and the North Reading Superior Offices Association for the term effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next order, public comment. Is anybody here for public comment?
No.
Is there anyone joining us? Anybody, nobody looks like they're joining us either.
No one there, except Maureen behind the...
Thank you for joining us.
We've grown to like an audience.
I know. All right, appointment of the process serving constable, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, we received an application earlier this summer from a candidate for the fourth process serving constable, we have three that are currently filled right now. The individual was reviewed by the police department, and a thorough background check was conducted, there were no issues identified, as you saw in the communication we provided. They recommended that the inquiry and a driving record be reviewed, and that was conducted, and we, I think, are comfortable with the candidate laying before you here to be considered for appointment. We have prepared a motion accordingly, and Madam Chair, through you, I would defer to the liaison, Mrs. Gonzalez, if she has any further comments.
Sure, Mrs. Gonzalez?
I know that the town has done its due diligence, and there have been no issues, so, we recommend it.
All right, so, do we have a motion?
Yep, Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination, the following name for appointment as process serving constable to expire December 31, 2022, Gabrielle Mangiello. Is that right?
Yeah.
Do you say yes?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. And again, everything's in order, all the paperwork's in order, and this has been vetted by the police chief, and all set to go, right, Mr. Gilberto?
The police department, not the chief himself.
Okay. All right, so, we have a motion, and this is just, is this a roll call?
It is, the name being stated.
Gabrielle?
Mangiello.
Mangiello. So, it's a name, roll call, vote. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Wallner?
Gabrielle Mangiello.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Gabrielle Mangiello.
Mr. Studo?
Gabrielle Mangiello.
And Manu Kelly is Gabrielle Mangiello. That's good, we have a new constable. Next order of business are the legal bills. Do we have a motion, Mr. Wallner?
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for July 2022 in the amount of $2,187.55 as follows, general, $1,782.55, labor, $405, for a total of $2,187.55.
Do we have a second? Second. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is it for the legal bills, just the one bill, right, Mr. Wallner?
Yep.
We're on to town administrators report.
Madam Chair, through you, I had about a dozen items to go through, but I will limit it to three that are time sensitive.
You can go through all six, that's okay.
That's what he said, 12, he can just do the three.
See, I'm telling you, I'm not good with numbers, so...
First is that we have been notified that there will be road closures in the vicinity of Harold Parker State Forest, associated with the motion picture that's going on. The one, so, the closures are Salem Street between Jenkins Road and Berry Pond Road, there'll be local resident access only, and it's not in North Reading. Middleton Road between Berry Pond Road and Forest Riding Academy, full closure. Salem Street between Forest Street and Marblehead Street and Forest Riding Academy, that's a portion in North Reading, that's local resident access only. Salem Street, Milton Road between Forest Riding Academy and Berry Pond Road will be full closure, no access. And Harold Parker Road between Milton Road and Route 14 will be full closure. And I know that there's been notice, that's been issued to the residents who are largely not in North Reading. We did find out about this late, and it was referenced to communication with law enforcement, but it wasn't about North Reading law enforcement, it was Andover law, Andover. So, I just want to put that out there, to make you aware that it'll be going on just to our north over the town line. Tomorrow, Thursday, I keep saying Thursday, but it's...
Just one day filming?
It'd be overnight, tomorrow night, that's correct. Second is that the Health Department continues to facilitate vaccination clinics, conducted by a third-party contractor, who administers... who introduces COVID-19 vaccines. I would just note that beginning of the next clinic on September 10th, they will have the so-called updated vaccine, version of the vaccine available. So if you're looking for that, you can go to the Health website and find out more information to register, along with the appropriate disclaimers and information about the vaccine itself. Thirdly, I will just note, this is a preliminary information, but we've been contacted by JRM who are advising us that they are going to need to modify the collection schedule in the hopes of being able to more adequately finish the town in the schedule that they've set. They haven't proposed a specific schedule to us yet, but I just kinda wanna give the board a heads up that that's coming over the course of the fall and I hope to have more information from you, for you at the September 28 regular meeting.
Mr. Gilberto, when you, when you say modify the collection schedule, they're not reducing the number of collections?
No, they're looking to spread the collection out over multiple days, so designated geographic areas of the town for a specific day in the hopes that they have a better shot at finishing the town over the course of, finishing a roof over the course of the day rather than cramming the whole town into one day, which has been proven problematic for more than a year at this point.
What's, why, why is it?
So the most significant factor is the wait time that they're going to dispose of the time it takes them to truck. They have to go to the area, wait in line, sometimes wait multiple hours and then come back to finish the roof. So that, that's one issue, the other issue is the, you know, they're looking to, amongst the communities that they serve, spread out communities over multiple days and not focus on any one community. It allows them to resolve issues more quickly, so if they miss something on one day, they're right back here in the community the next day. God forbid that that actually happened, and our hope is to minimize that moving forward. And the third thing is, we, we know there's been a change, and the communication from JRM has not been great with regard to that change, but they have been bought out by Republic Services, which is a nationwide company. They're making some adjustments, but are committed to continue to provide the resources here. I will tell you, we've received indications from JRM well prior to the transaction with Republic that this was coming. They had indicated to us more than two years ago that they were seriously considering it and, you know, we certainly don't wanna see a change take place, but we do understand why it's happening and the proof is sort of in the pudding in the fact that they are struggling to complete the roof every Tuesday, in this case, with Wednesday.
So that you think it might be gone to two days a week or different?
Part of that will be up for discussion in terms of what they propose and how they're looking to implement it, so more to come, but multiple days, yes.
Okay, a lot of people complain about the, the collection, so that's a somewhat of a big issue.
It's statewide there, I mean, it's not just here, it's Pevanta and it's, it's every town, every city are sitting there waiting, it's, it's not just us.
And the other, my other question to you is, we, we voted on those bags and the rollout of that aspect of collection too, where we're going to that one or one receptacle?
Two, four, five.
Two, two, what's the bag?
Two, and the bags, and then we were talking about all the other, implementing the other requirements for the rest of the textiles and all the rest of that, what, what happened with that? Because we, we really, we spent a long time on that, and, and then I know that it got delayed, but it's not something that should come as a surprise all of a sudden when it's implemented, so what, what's the status? And when are we gonna at least be giving more public service announcements on that?
So I expect in the September 28th meeting, we'll give an update with regard to that, but what has happened is lack of supply in the bags, just unable to acquire the bags in a timely fashion to kick off that July 1 start, which is what we had targeted. So right now, you know, we're looking at something later in the fall for an implementation to give people the opportunity for some notice. Whether or not these two things coincide with each other or not, the schedule and the bags remains to be seen, we need to work that out with JRM and Republic. But that is something that is still very much on the radar, but, you know, for those who don't know, the delay is due to the fact we could not acquire bags to do that. We needed to preorder the bags from, from a manufacturer, the delays are multiple months. We had hoped to be able to start July for us, but it was clear pretty shortly after the board approved the program change that the date they had set was not gonna work, unfortunately. So there will be more to come, most likely for September 28th meeting.
All right.
I'm on the liaison now for that group, and because it's very clear, I mean, I look at my neighborhood, you know, people are putting out lots of bags, two barrels, and they're picking up everything, so I don't know if, I'll, I think our meeting is the end of September for that group, but I'm gonna ask, are we gonna, are we not gonna push the two-barrel limit until we have the bags? Or can we start educating people right now about cutting back?
Wait till we have the bags.
We have to wait till we have the bags, okay.
But I don't think we should wait though, to, to, I think it should be, even though we've talked about it here, we don't usually have an audience, I don't think we should wait, I think we should let people know, this is what's, the change is.
Yeah, but not make the change until we have the bags.
Well, I mean, but that's the same with the, all of the new requirements under the DEP, so we have to let people know that because it, it's a lot of different things that.
It's a behavior change, that's gonna take time.
But we, we have to really explain what is a lot, because I looked up, we usually have a hazardous materials day and what's on the website, I think, is from 2020 or something like that, so it's not even, even our own website isn't updated with the current information and we should have, we're expecting to implement these modifications to the, to that, because that's a big issue for people.
Yeah.
And people get confused even on a holiday, is it gonna, is it today the day or they said? So people are just generally, even though we have a steady day, that's confusing for people, so I think we need to put that information out there now. So if people have questions or things, just not waiting until, okay, it's being implemented next week. I think we need to explain that, because even I've forgotten about all the changes that we made, because it's been, you know, a few months.
Because we actually have, I mean, forget the change, we actually have a rule of two barrels, right? That's the max we're supposed to be doing now, and that's clearly not being observed. I mean, I watched them go by a construction site and they picked up 10 bags that were hanging out there by the construction, you know, so. So I'll, I'll bring it to their attention.
Right, just to have some information now being put out there, I think would be a help.
And they might wanna put it on their own website, the recycling website, the information.
Yep.
I know it makes extra work, but even something in a mailing that goes out or, or a billing that goes out or, or absolutely has to be updated on the website, you know, for, for the current dates and things like that.
It could be in the transcript too, should be in the transcript, right?
Or, or, I mean, even on the website, the website has old information on it, so.
Madam Chair, through you, just on the Household Hazardous Waste Day, it is Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 AM to noon at the DPW facility on Chestnut Street. I know that's on the special collection page, we'll put that out separately as well, on town, so people see it.
Yeah. All right, thank you, I, I didn't mean to interrupt it, but you brought that up, so I wanted to, I definitely wanted to ask you. It was on my things to check with you anyway, because of the composting issue and the textiles issue, that's coming in. You can't throw clothes in your trash anymore, right?
Not supposed to, yeah. That's, that was, that was the next phase, to the bags.
Right, right, so, you know.
What was the date for that though?
November, I think it was.
November, yeah.
For the bags?
No, for the textiles.
Right, and that's come, that's coming up.
That's coming up pretty quick, yeah.
All right. So we should have, because we have these committees, we should really have some sort of public service. Somehow, some way to get that, that information out there.
I think you could comment on that, mother, if you're trying to, I think a lot of people believe that, like, when we said no textiles and mattresses.
There's a little mic that I follow down.
Welcome.
I think that a lot of people I've spoken to about the mattresses and textiles not being picked up as of November 1st, they all think it's our town and they don't seem to understand that it's a statewide regulation. I think we really need to put that out there that goes beyond this town and it's a whole state issue.
Absolutely.
People just don't care.
State requirement, absolutely.
It's gonna keep getting worse, so people need to understand, and I also think that people put out as many barrels as they want, they don't cheer and pack them, they just don't care. I see it all the time, they could do a better job of really packing it down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I just will add, we also put on a mailer in the utility barrels of water and trash bill the last quarter that the bills were issued, so people should have gotten a flyer in their bill as well. We'll put it out on the website, so it's more, more visible and on social media.
Thank you, that's great, and was there anything else that you wanted to?
I include my comments.
Are you sure, that was only three?
I'm not gonna go through the other nine.
That's it? All right, all right, so let's move on to board member reports and all new business, Mr. Wallner.
Yeah, so just on the Swan Pond Trail project, I finally finished the RFP draft, so I assume I give that to you, is that correct? Or do you wanna vote from us first before?
Now, why don't you send it to me and we'll get forward.
Okay, all right, so that should be ready to go. That was a big project, just to get that done, it's a lot of pages, so we'll play it to it, right, that's the biggest thing, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wallner, when we talked about before, when we talked about Martin's Pond and dredging or those type of things, did, did we ever move forward with any of that?
Yeah, I've asked them to do that, they're doing a survey of the pond right now, and by the way, the, the work we've done so far has really worked, the weeds have looked better than ever. So it's actually, you've asked that before, how is it, and they've told me it's been really good, and they're doing another form of survey now. To be honest, I'm getting some resistance about the dredging, but I'm reminding them that it's really, we're not trying to judge right now, we're just trying to find out what's the pros and cons of doing that. And so I, I continue to push them on that, they understand where I'm coming from, they, they have their own feelings about that and, you know, there'll be neighborhood resistance, because it's, it was controversial before, but it's really just a question, what's the pros and cons? We can decide if we wanna move forward.
But is someone able to, to answer that question? Because I know people are worried about dredging, obviously upsets a lot of the.
We wouldn't be the first to have dredged a pond, so I think it's, it's just doing the homework and going to figure it out. And we do have a local resource at Merrimack.
Right, right.
Who also could give an opinion.
Right.
But it'd be like, just finding out what's the pros and cons of doing it, and what happens if you do that. So they know, I've asked them multiple times, I'll, I'll remind them again.
And maybe, did you reach out to Merrimack?
I, I haven't, I don't know.
That might be a good idea too, to just get even some information or, because I think they came out a couple of times years ago. There was someone doing, I guess, maybe water quality and.
Yep, they were doing like studies, you know, the nitrogen content, phosphorus, from my memory.
Right, it was a while ago, yeah.
And they were monitoring, monitoring us on an annual, at least an annual basis.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, anyways, that's, it's, and that's supposed to be tied into the ARPA funds, where, that's where that came from?
I don't remember where, we, we, we did give a modest amount, right, to be able to get that underway.
The weeds, but I mean, I think when that was brought up in discussion about potentially dredging the pond, we, we talked about that being connected with the ARPA funds.
So, so that may be a potential use, again, we've sort of held on making determinations relative to the ARPA funds if you're going to the wastewater planning.
Right.
But that, I, I believe it would be an eligible use.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I believe it would be an eligible use in one of the categories somehow.
Sounds like it, yeah.
You mean, whatever can be helpful in that area, because that really is like Ipswich River Park, it's really something that we should really care for.
It's a precious resource for us, yeah, and it'd be nice to clean it up.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez, anything?
When I was at the community planning meeting, Bruce Wheeler was there, just kind of making some little changes, but saying that he would be going forward very soon to submit, and that would get rolling, so I was just happy to see that going.
That's good, okay.
Can I go back for a second?
Mr. Wallner?
Sorry, yeah, I'm just on the tax committee stuff, so I'm gonna be working with Michael on how we're gonna get that word out through the various departments that it's gonna be affected by, so it's just, really, it's just a question of how are we gonna modify our website to make it easier for people to understand it and to get the word out in a clear way? But I think we have the information, it's just, it's a marketing effort and it's going to different departments to get them to make modifications.
Is it about the abatement and the programs for seniors?
It's the entire program, so if you go to like the Lexington, when they have one document that, that describes every program they have to help people stay in their home, we'll be following a very similar pattern, so. But it's, it's really coming down to the website, you know, how can we modify that and, you know, make it useful, more useful, and having a hard copy document as well, so. Excuse me, Leanne, if I cut you off, I just want to add that.
Mr. Studo, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's it, let's adjourn, do we have a motion?
Is that it? Okay, yep.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second, motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Gonzalez, Mr. Studo, all those in favor?
Aye.